Okay.
Okay, good evening Costa Mesa, welcome to our first study session of the new year for January 12, 2021. At this time, I will call the meeting to order. Ms. Green, can you lead the, can you call the roll? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm out of order. Will you please join me in the pledge allegiance to our flag? Now more than ever, we must express our patriotism. Please say with me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Member Chavez.
Here.
Councilmember Gamaras.
Here.
Councilmember Harlan.
Here.
Councilmember Harper.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Mayor Protim Mar. Absent.
Momentarily.
Mayor Foley.
Present. Okay, we have one study session item tonight.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I apologize for interrupting. Can I report out from closed session?
Yes, please do.
Thank you. We had a special closed session meeting this evening. There were three items on the closed session. There was direction given with respect to a, an item with, regarding the security update. There was just an update regarding the Barnes litigation and on the item of potential litigation, which involved, involves the Newport Mesa Unified School District and its approval of a notice of exemption and the Estancia High School Theater Project with, on a motion of Councilmember Reynolds, seconded by Councilmember Chavez and approved on a seven to zero vote, authorizing the city attorney's office to initiate litigation under SEQA against the Newport Mesa Unified School District in, in connection with that approval. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. We now have our one study session item and at this time, I wonder, I'm, I'm wondering if Mayor Protim Mar has the link because I know she was coming right on. Can someone just text her to make sure she has the right link? Because I know Councilmember Gamaras and I were in the wrong, we were in the wrong Zoom a moment ago.
I just text her, I'm waiting for a response.
Okay, thanks. All right, so we will have public comments, which will be limited to two minutes. Or Ms. Green, do we have any speakers for public comments?
Madam Mayor, do you want me to read the title and then we'll have staff presentation?
Okay, usually on the study session, we do the public comment first, but we can do it that way, that's fine. Yes.
The title is SB 1383 Organic Waste Collection and Processing and Recycling Programs: Regulatory Impacts and Required Actions. Presentation by Public Services Department, Mr. Seth Raman.
Mr. Seth Raman, the floor is yours.
Madam Mayor and Madam City Council, this is regarding, this is to provide you an update and also to get your direction on the new SB 1383 regulations that was recently approved for which mandates new, new requirements on waste collection. As you're aware, the city of Costa Mesa administers waste correction for multifamily over five units and above and for commercial properties. So with that, I'll have our consultant, Mike Balleier, make the presentation and then we'll all be available to answer questions. Mike?
Sure. Mayor Foley, members of the city council, I'll dive right into the slideshow to kind of give us an overview of the regulations and then we'll go into the, the staff report. So I will share my screen and hopefully get the slideshow up. Is everybody seeing it?
Yes.
All right, very good. So SB 1383 is the most significant waste reduction mandate the state has done since AB 939. What makes it different is it sets a statewide target that 75% of the organic waste that's currently going into landfills will be diverted. That's about 20 to 25 million tons of material. And because it is a state mandate and not a local program, the regulations are very prescriptive. AB 939 allowed cities to develop their own ways of diverting 50% of their waste from the landfill. That's not the case with SB 1383. They're specifying what you must do. So organic waste is green waste, which would be landscape waste, it's food waste. It also is untreated lumber, paper, but really what we're looking at with most of the regulations is food waste and landscape waste. As you can see from the pie chart, food waste is one of the largest single categories of material that's going to the landfill. What these regulations do is they stipulate that not only are we going to try to take this material and make compost or create renewable energy from it, but we are throwing out an unknown amount of edible food, more than six million tons of food waste. We, we believe that at least 20% of the current food donations that are going on are definitely achievable and so the regulations require that increase as well. Climate change is tied to these solid waste programs through Senate Bill 32. I'm gonna throw a lot of acronyms out at you, but AB 32 is the basis of it all. It was the Global Warming Solutions Act. It said that we had to reduce climate emissions to 1990 levels. Then Senate Bill 32 came along and said, no, we need to be 40% below 1990 levels. And landfills account for about 21% of the methane gas that's released in our state. That's where the regulations first, AB 341, which mandated that businesses and multifamily properties have recycling programs. And then AB 1826, which mandated those same entities have organic waste recycling programs by certain threshold dates. Senate Bill 1383 basically establishes regulations and the additional requirement that single-family residents and multifamily properties of under five units have to have food waste recycling, starting in January of 2022. So as you, you can see by these milestone dates for Senate Bill 1383, that 50% reduction in the year 2020 did not happen. So in September of this year, the regulations included what I refer to as tier four businesses. Those are the very small ones, two cubic yards of waste per week or more. They fell under the mandate to have to have an organic waste recycling program. So if we look at the key implementation dates, the one in red is really the one that, that we're having to deal with and that we're coming to you with a suggested plan of action. That's the date when single-family residents, multifamily residents and all commercial properties with two cubic yards or more per week of solid waste are required to have organic waste recycling programs in place. In addition, there are a number of new reporting and monitoring requirements upon the city. And unfortunately, all of these are unfunded mandates. So the, the suggested path is to look at having more stringent agreement terms and also to make your trash haulers help shoulder some of that cost burden and regulatory burden of monitoring their activities. So again, what the jurisdiction has to do under SB 1383 is provide the organics collections to the groups I mentioned. You need to establish an edible food recovery program. Again, the law wants 20% more edible food waste donated to feed the hungry. There's expanded education and outreach requirements. Basically, every entity that's impacted by the law, that would be your residents, your businesses, your haulers, the facilities they use. There's even a component of coordinating education with the county that all falls upon the city to handle. The procurement requirements are really the state's effort to build the markets. We're taking 20 million tons out of the landfill and trying to make marketable products out of them. They're going to require you as a jurisdiction to purchase a number based upon your population. Rough figures is about 9,200 tons a year of, of mulch would be one of the factors. You can also purchase renewable natural gas and that's the other argument for contracting with your waste haulers through a formal agreement. If that agreement stipulates that they use renewable natural gas, the city can take procurement credit for what they purchased to run in their vehicles. So it lessens the fiscal impact upon the city. Capacity planning is another area where we think as more formal agreement is needed. The state requires that you have 15 years of capacity for all your organic material and the best way to do that is through an agreement with your trash hauler and make that one of the requirements to be a franchise hauler is provide us with the needed capacity for our organic waste. 2024 is really the hard deadline for enforcement. Prior to 2022, one of the things the city has to do is, is pass a, an ordinance on enforcement. So any location, business institution, multifamily property that does not have a required program ultimately needs to be fined by the jurisdiction. There's actually a state model with all the languages and the fine stipulations that the city has to put in place. 2024 is the hard and fast date where the state will start fining the jurisdictions. If they don't have all their programs in place, if they don't have the mechanism to make the needed behavior happen, for lack of a, a better term. So again, all your responsibilities, we have tried to handle through a voluntary approach to this point. The city has an annual permit process tied to a, an evergreen seven year permit with your haulers. So each year, we added requirements. And two slides further, I can go through that. But again, this is a good show of all the different areas that the city has to touch. And unfortunately, all of these have a dollar amount attached to them. Again, these guys here, the haulers through an agreement can handle a lot of that burden and actually eliminate the, the need for the city to shoulder many of the costs. So again, formal franchise agreement, first and foremost, needs to require the haulers to provide the programs that the, the city is, is mandated to provide. There's also container coloring and labeling that's specified in the regulations. We need to have that in an agreement. So the haulers are contractually bound to help us comply with those measures. We also need the hauler's help to identify your larger businesses, what the state refers to as tier one and tier two locations. Those are the ones that are actually mandated to have a food waste donation program. So again, the haulers need to help us with that as a cost saving measure. We need to expand education and outreach, as I mentioned. So again, the haulers currently develop some educational material under their permit. That needs to be expanded to cover the additional areas SB 1383 requires. Again, I mentioned the purchase of renewable natural gases. There's also contamination and the effectiveness of the program measures in SB 1383, among which are twice per year waste sorts, where the hauler needs to dump collected material on the ground and see how much food is in the trash, how much trash is being mixed in with the separated food. That needs to be at least twice a year. There is route monitoring requirements in the regulations. So again, having a, a contract that lays out those activities that the haulers required to do is something we don't have now and something that we're recommending. And then again, rough figures, nobody really knows exactly how much this will cost. But I would say a low end of, of 100 to, you know, well over 300,000 is the cost impact. So again, we believe the city can effectively through an agreement, get its waste haulers to share a good deal of that burden. So again, what has been done to date? January of 2016 is when the City of Costa Mesa was required to have an organic waste recycling program. We met that requirement. The years of 2017 through 2019 were when more and more businesses started to fall under. In April of 2016, it was anybody with eight cubic yards or more of food waste had to have a program. January of 2017, it dropped down to anybody with four cubic yards or more of organic waste per week. Tier two. Tier three then came in January of 2019. That was anybody with four cubic yards or more of trash per week. So that brought us up to about 1,100 hauler accounts between business and multifamily that were under the mandate. Our voluntary efforts got us to a 56% compliance rate. Not bad, not 100%, but we were making progress. But then, as I mentioned, the state measured the reduction of organics for 2020. And in September, they determined that we were not going to meet the 50% goal. Therefore, they added the tier four locations. Those were any business or multifamily property with two cubic yards or more of trash. That added another thousand hauler customers to our count. And that was the point in time that we determined voluntary efforts are not going to get us there. Cal Recycle Staff, the state agency responsible for overseeing our implementation of SB 1383 and other regulations, discussed an informal plan with us. The bottom line is they want to know how we're going to reach 100% in, on January 1st of 2022. We looked at franchising perhaps multifamily collections. But with the evergreen clause and the permits your, your haulers currently have, we pretty soon switched our focus to coming up with a non-exclusive franchise agreement. So we wouldn't run afoul of permit terms, but could still jump through all the hoops required by the new regulations. To protect the city's options in the future, we did send out a, a non-renewal notice for the permit. As I mentioned, it's an evergreen. So by sending out that notice, now there's six years remaining on the hauler's permits. We also have, you know, the, the ability to set these requirements. Sorry, I skipped ahead. Upon the haulers, and if they don't meet them, then we still have the ability to remove them from the permit system, from the agreements. But we do need, I think, better language that includes these regulations to really make that meaningful. And so the, the last half of the year, we really worked on meeting with the city attorney, going through the ordinance changes that would be required to have a new agreement, discuss the other ordinance changes that need to be made sometime in 2021. And that leads me to my final slide. Sorry, I'm going on and on. But there's a lot to cover. So this is the suggested timeline of events to make sure that we're at the 100% compliance level. The state wants us to be in January of 2022. With your concurrence, we would like to execute the more formal agreements with the haulers incorporating cost sharing and SB 1383 compliance requirements. Also bring that code revision back to you, along with executed agreements. And also the two new ordinances that SB 1383 requires that you pass. One is a procurement ordinance, which, you know, agrees that between compost and mulch and renewable natural gas and electricity from biomass, the city is, is obligated to, to purchase these materials to further state regulations. The second is the enforcement ordinances. Again, both have state models, both have prescriptive elements that have to be in there. Our goal is at the end of the first quarter to bring those back to you for review. Second quarter is ideally when we would like the, the new franchise to start. The tier one, the very large organic waste generators that were required to have a program since April of 2016. That's the period of time we think they need to have their program. The haulers need to deliver the containers. They need to be in compliance. They had five years under a voluntary basis to do so. Then third quarter would be the tier twos. We would start reaching out to the tier threes and tier fours, letting them know the required programs were, were, are coming. Also to the single family residences. You're lucky, most of them do have a compliant program at this point. But again, you do have some multifamily properties that need to be notified that they're going to have to start recycling their food waste in January of 2022. Again, noticing them in the fourth quarter, when you roll out the programs to your smaller businesses and then waiting until January to start the, the multifamily programs is acceptable to the state. And those multifamily programs will, will frankly be a challenge. So again, none of this is easy. There's no other state that has done this before. California is kind of on the cutting edge. So we are all basically following the regulations as they, they're passed. In fact, the Office of Administrative Law just approved, I think it was November 3rd, SB 1383 regulations. And it was over a year past the deadline from when the state was supposed to have all of this in place. So that's why we're kind of scrambling, or appears we're scrambling, is we have a very short timeframe after these regulations were approved to actually have the programs in place. And so with that, I'll get away from the slideshow. And I'm available to go through the report, answer questions, really direct me on, on how best to, to bring you all up to speed on, on these regulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ballot. Okay, council, is there anyone who has any questions? Seeing no one, no hands. Oh, okay. Mayor Pro Tim Mar.
Sorry, I'm just going to be behind all, all day somehow today. Anyway, so on the procurement front, and I was just wondering, like, those are some fairly broad statements to like, procure renewable natural gas. And like, what would we use that for and how would we do that?
Well, it is, and in fact, I have a table here, but it's on a couple pages. I don't think the state has factored in whether you need to buy it or not. I, I think their thought process is we have to develop these markets. So you as the city that's generating these materials, you need to help pull them through and use them in your community somehow. Now, they, they do allow transportation fuel, which again, if we have a written agreement with a service provider to the city, we can get credit for their use of renewable natural gas in their vehicles. And frankly, all of your haulers are already doing that. But again, you probably have some mulch on city mediums that you already use. They want to make sure you're purchasing it from the locations that are actually taking the source separated organic waste and making products out of it, the same with the mulch. So to, to, to cut it off, the state doesn't care whether you need it or not. You need to buy it.
Lovely. And then can you just clarify for me? So I, I live in a townhome complex that does not have a separate organics recycling at this time. We have one bin like we have had for seven years. So what, explain the multifamily rollout process in just like a nutshell. Like, are we, are we in the wrong that that's not the case? Or is this, this one of the things that's?
No, you're, you're not in the wrong. The, the Assembly Bill 1826 was the mandatory commercial organics recycling program. That has always exempted multifamily properties from the start. It said, as long as you are properly handling your, your landscape waste, your green waste, you're considered in compliance. What the SB 1383 regulations did is they phased in this idea of no, you have to recycle your food waste as well. And they set the January 1st, 2022 date as the timeframe when that has to happen. Now, it, it's going to be a challenge. Some locations are going to need split bins. Some can have carts, some may need the little, you know, compostable pots that people collect. But again, that is going to be a logistical challenge. Frankly, the, the fact that everybody has to have a program doesn't make it easy or not potentially problematic. Now, there are space constraint waivers that the city can grant if a location doesn't have room. And so again, that's part of the administration monitoring and reporting costs and headache upon the city is now you have to gauge space constraints at all your properties, fill out some type of form, grant them a waiver, have those records available for at any time inspection by Cal Recycle Staff. So there, there's quite a bit of minutia in the 187 pages of regulations.
Your enthusiasm for this legislation is. I'm, I'm also wondering about the, so some of the food diversion or food programs. I mean, I think that that's actually something we could be fairly successful at, given the number of restaurants we have. Like, given that, and you know, we've, we've been talking about how we can get restaurants to collaborate with a homeless shelter and pick fruit up trees. Like, what are all these things that we can do with organics that might otherwise go to waste? And so, I mean, I think there's the potential for something to be developed. But I guess I'm a little bit unclear on there's, seems like we could do kind of anything that counts in the box as doing something in, in that framework for what the city needs to be doing. That, to some extent, that is being left to the cities, is my impression. Is that right?
In, in general, what is required is that all tier one and tier two businesses have food waste donation programs. That the city have some type of general program framework and participants that they make known through public education. If you're a business and you want to donate your food, here's who you contact. The city has to facilitate that. But the regulations go even a step further. It says that if the addition of all this new food impacts these volunteer organizations that are the food runners, the pantries, and, and they can't handle all the material, the city has to financially backstop that program to make sure it happens. And that's one of the big unknown cost factors. And one of the reasons I didn't mention it in the slideshow, but I think the city may want to start lobbying the County of Orange. They had a wonderful grant program that Cal Recycle also participated in. They use an organization called Waste Not OC that would go out to all the restaurants, train them on proper food handling, food safety. They developed a database because again, the city's going to have to track how much food is being donated. And again, our feeling is a very small landfill surcharge by the county specific to a countywide edible food donation program would eliminate the need for the city to have to fund and backstop that. And really, a lot of the food waste donation programs do not follow city boundaries. They work in multiple cities. So that's a potential avenue. But again, the city gets to decide, you're right, what your edible food donation program is going to be. My concern is just the potential cost and the monitoring cost could be substantial.
Mayor Pro Tim Mar, can I just ask? Don't we still participate in that program that you just described? We were the first city to participate. Do we still participate or no? Can you hear me?
Question for me?
Yeah.
Sorry. Well, the, the grant funding ran out. So Waste Not OC is trying to go to all the individual jurisdictions and asking them to pay them directly. Even though I know from discussions with Mike Leirakis, that they really liked the countywide effort.
But my question is, are we still participating? Are they still going to restaurants in Costa Mesa?
They, they still are to a certain extent, but they're trying to figure out how they're going to be funded. So at some point in time, there, you're either going to have to pay them to continue or, you know, again, it's.
Sorry, sorry, Mayor Pro Tim.
Yeah. So again, I, I don't believe the city is paying them at this point in time. But the county grant funds have ended and, and they're trying to figure out how to change their business model. And, and they're a very good organization. I, I think they do great work. I, I just think the county approach was a, a very good one.
Okay, Mayor Pro Tim Mar, did you have any other questions?
I'll just make my comment real quick since it's study session. I mean, I think that there's a lot that we can do that's, that's creative. I think we're the right kind of community that like actually sort of enjoys trying to figure out how to work together, especially with our restaurant space to make some kind of a food program. I'm a little bit more hesitant about buying renewable natural gas for fun. And, and so I think some of our efforts should probably be focused on the food waste side and not the like other ways to reduce a short-term climate pollution. And then there's something else I was going to say. The county program needs to. The county program needs to come back and something else that I'll come back to in a second. Sorry, discombobulated.
Okay, so next up I have Councilmember Harper, then Councilmember Reynolds, then Councilmember Harland.
My good, good presentation. Thank you very much. Can you clarify for me how they measure the cubic organic waste and how they measure our success in this program? Can you clarify that?
Well, the the success will be measured by the the contamination studies that are mandated. Up until this point, the state has been frankly, learning as they go. They they originally gave us some business types and what the estimated organic waste would be. And some of them were accurate, some of them were a mile off. So what we've been doing with your haulers from 2016 forward is figuring out who the tier one, tier two, tier threes are. The haulers are collecting food waste, like I said, at about 14% of the businesses. A lot of our compliance now is is through green waste at multifamily properties, frankly. So again, the the volume of the material is gonna vary significantly. Green waste is very light, takes up a large amount of space relative to weight as opposed to food waste, which is very dense, very heavy. So again, what the state is is looking at is what percentage by weight in samples is food that is still in the the trash, for example. And you you have to show overall by 2025 that 75% of your organic waste is being diverted. That is a very ambitious goal, but it's it's actually a law. So again, how how successful people are gonna be remains to be seen.
So it's a short answer, they're sampling the weight or they're sampling the the trash to see what's organic, what's food waste? Is that the short answer?
Yeah, up up until now, it's been get programs to everybody. And then January 1st of 2022 is when the qualitative measurements start to determine if your program's effective and if it's effective to the level it needs to be.
And in our discussion, what you're discussing here is about what the city provides as a service with certain customers. I know the Sand District does all the residential, is that correct?
Correct.
But all that, all that is added together to see how we do as a city, is that correct?
Ultimately, the the city is viewed as a as a single entity. And unfortunately, the way the law is written, special districts procurement, they're under different requirements. They don't have to do the procurement. So your procurement target is based on the city's total population, even though you have two governmental entities handling different sections of hauling. The the focus is on the city itself as the responsible party.
Harper, the answer is yes to your question.
Thank you. Okay, that's okay. I know.
Sorry, Mayor Foley.
It's a it's good education, Corbin. Thank you, Mike. It's it's okay. So I'm I'm sure we're coordinating with the Sand District on trying to get them, encourage them to move towards, you know, better success and better division. And I frankly, for as a resident, you know, I I just don't think there's enough out there that compels us to do what we should be doing and and be consistent about it. And I don't think residents in general understand that we're gonna end up with this additional cost if we don't. Just get there. I mean, I'd like to forget all the regulation, all the rules, is try and get there, right? That should be a good message. The last comment I have is, could someone pick up all my Amazon boxes? Because I think that's gotta have a huge impact. And that's considered organic, right? That could could can that go in my green container? I'm sorry for the question, but it seems like a big thing, doesn't it? I know Andrea's laughing at me, but I think I got a serious problem at home.
Well, what's happening is in combination with China's green sword policy, which really impacted all of our recycling markets, most cities are moving to source separation. So potentially, the City of Costa Mesa's residential program, which has been mixed waste processing and then organics collected separately, might go to three containers, where you have a trash container, a recycling container for the Amazon boxes, typically cardboard, paper, beverage containers would be in the recycling stream. And then you would have an organic stream that would be your landscape waste, your compostables, your food waste. So that's, I think, where we're headed.
So maybe I didn't understand. I don't think I understood. So the cardboard would go where, to a third container? Is that the short answer?
Yeah, currently, for for under four units or less in single family homes, it would be mixed with the trash. It would be taken to Stanton where it would be removed and recycled. So you have basically mixed waste processing and then a separate container for green waste and food waste for your residents. For your businesses and your multifamily properties, some have mixed waste processing, some have source separation, and that's where the SB 1383 regulations really have some dictates and have some requirements as far as the amount of sorting. If you're doing mixed waste processing, you have to go to a high diversion rate facility. And what that means is that facility has to show that it's removing initially 50% of all the organic waste it receives. And then by 2025, 75%, or the state will not allow that program. It can dictate that, hey, you have to have three separate containers. And if that's not effective, hey, you have to have four separate containers. So again, that's the the challenge with the regulations is it's very prescriptive. So if you're successful, you can do whatever you want within these certain parameters. But if you aren't, that's when the state can actually make you change your your programs.
So I I I think Andrea Mara alluded to it, and I agree with her that that, you know, to find creative ways to accomplish the goal of success. And then that just resolves a lot of problems for us. So I I don't know where you're headed with that, but I, you know, I'd love to support that if you can, if you've got ideas or if there's a different venue for that. So that's all my questions now.
Thank you. Okay, we have Councilmember Reynolds and then Councilmember Harland.
Okay, I think it's two questions, down to two questions now. I'd like going later, later in the lineup. Can you clarify, you probably said this, I think it was half an hour ago or so, just remind me, what is a tier one business and a tier two business? I think you said the, you know, by by weight or volume of trash that they produce, but help me like.
Yeah, they did it by by volume. So a tier one is any location that has eight cubic yards or more per week of organic waste. And that's a combination.
And who is that? Is that grocery stores? Is that restaurants?
Well, I think the the Orange Coast College, the the Fairgrounds, South Coast Plaza, large hotels that do banquets, those would be your tier ones. That's a lot of, a lot of material. Your your tier twos then is about half that, four cubic yards per week. And and again, that would be midsize hotels, large restaurants, your your high schools, your grade schools, large businesses with over 100 employees that have like an onsite cafeteria. Those might be tier two. Tier three is the majority of your businesses. Your your McDonald's, your your Jack in the Box, folks like that are typically tier threes or not quite four cubic yards per week of organic waste. But again, it's it's a huge pool that that tier three, and now they've added tier fours, most of which will probably qualify for exemptions. But then it falls on the city because the city is the only entity that can grant an exemption. So again, it's just more work that that the city has to do or contractually get your haulers to help with.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. I appreciate that, just sort of giving me a sense of of who we're talking about. Because I don't don't have a sense of what, how much trash these different businesses produce. And and I do, I I I just want to make a a quick comment on, you know, this is a lot that we have to do. You mentioned that the targets or mandated targets are are really aggressive. But I'm just recalling sometime in the last two years, probably not last year, taking the the tour of one of the local landfills through the Orange County Sanitation District. And it is remarkable to see how much trash that we we do produce. So aggressive targets, but but absolutely necessary. I'll pick on Councilmember Harper just a little bit. You know, you could also not order from Amazon and buy local and reduce the the cardboard that you're bringing into the city.
Not me, it's my wife and kids.
All right, let them know, let them know. The best way to reduce trash is to to consume less. I wanted to, my other question is probably actually for Mr. Seth Araman or or Ms. Apurki. I'm curious, my understanding is that one of the solutions is to be sort of adjusting some of our contracts with city waste haulers. And I wonder if this is an opportunity to address a couple other issues that are somewhat related, excuse me. One of the things that that came up a bit from some residents in my district, although I I think I've seen from Facebook, it's happening elsewhere, is just some rat infestation in some areas. And that's been an issue with in some some trash. The specific one I'm thinking of was a multifamily trash enclosure that was not well enclosed. And I'm just thinking if we have now bins that, you know, are are full of organic waste, that's just like a feast for for rats. And it sounded like we didn't have sort of specific ordinances about, you know, ensuring those enclosures. But I don't need to an answer now, but I'd love to see us, if we can, take this opportunity to maybe tighten up some rules to protect against any kind of rat infestation or other other related nuisances. And the other issue that I had shared by email, I think earlier today, is something that's concerned me about some of our, the large vehicles that move through the city. And I I shared with you some examples where we've had collisions with CRNR trucks or other waste hauling trucks. And so this is an opportunity to set some rules around even just explicit expectations around safety while driving on our roads, speeding. You know, I would support no right turns on on red for for large vehicles that have limited visibility. We've got real incidences of of pedestrian collisions and injuries. And I'd love to to take this opportunity to to try to address that as well. That's it. I I support the comments you've heard already about, you know, being creative. Certainly, if there's a countywide program, a tried and true program that already exists, let's, you know, get on lobbying the county to to fund that program and support us. And yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Harland and then Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, Councilmember Reynolds had a number of my questions, so I'll try and keep this this brief. I'm I'm curious, it seems like the compliance is is program based. So I'm wondering if there's anything in the regulations that provides credit for facilities that we would host locally or construction of new facilities that encouraged waste diversion?
There's no section within the regulations for that, although the state is acknowledging that we need 100 additional facilities statewide above the number that we have now. So how that will play out is part and parcel of that securing the 15 year capacity. If we get to a point where jurisdictions can't get that 15 year capacity, then theoretically, you could see the state or the California Air Resources Control Board start coming in and trying to make facilities be developed. Right now, there's been some grant funding that was used. In fact, CRNR, on our opening slide, one of the pictures was their anaerobic digestion facility in Paris. But we need a a bunch of those. So again, not related to SB 1383, but there there probably would be grant funding. And I'm not sure what type of acknowledgement or benefit the city could get. That's not clear, and that's not in SB 1383. Just the need to have 15 years of capacity for your materials.
I mean, ostensibly, we're gonna need some infrastructure. And as a matter of, I would say, efficiency and equity, you know, it may be worth us looking to see what we can host or or do locally. I mean, I don't have any specific ideas right now, but, you know, we're talking about a a program that's multidisciplinary and also has impacts on land use and circulation. So I I definitely want to make sure we we keep those issues in mind. I'm curious, what also would be penalties for for noncompliance?
Well, up to $10,000 a day. Basically, the state used the authority established in AB 939 to come up with that dollar amount. The concern with this regulation is that you have the Air Resources Control Board involved, which is much more inclined to fine. Cal Recycle has fined, I think, six jurisdictions since 1990. They're not as apt to fine people, but the the air, the air control folks, they're not afraid to fine noncompliant entities.
Right, okay. I can't remember who made the comment earlier about source reduction and and just source separation. But, you know, it it's always been odd to me since we moved here 15 years ago from Los Angeles where we had, you know, three containers. You had your blue, black, and green, and it just was a way of encouraging behavior. So with the idea of trying to promote this, and I think it was Councilmember Harper who made mention of, you know, just just doing it, it has to be somewhat physically present for people. Just dumping your trash together mixed and expecting to be separated elsewhere doesn't really create that kind of ethic. So I don't know if we are ultimately gonna move to that, but that's one very easy way to try and educate people. And I I imagine we we might be able to do that, especially within our residential community. Right, that's all for now. Thank you, though.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The benefit of going last is people ask your questions for you, which is great. So I'll just say my comments. You know, we frankly have a really ambitious thing to accomplish in the state. It's not gonna be easy because they're not really giving us any way to make it done, be done effectively or efficiently. It's more of a mandate being put upon us. So on my point of view, whatever it takes to get there, let's do it. If the quickest avenue to do so is to work with the haulers, let's do so. But let's cover ourselves because I quite frankly do not want to be fined 10 grand a day for not complying. So those are my comments. Let's be creative, be great out, but that's all I'm gonna say.
Okay, so I I think you have good comments and direction from the council. For sure, we want to reach out. Also, I'd encourage you to reach out to SOS if you haven't already learned about their edible food program that they are working with our restaurants on, because maybe we can get credit for that and maybe no one knows about that. Because they actually have a very extensive edible food waste program that they're working with our local restaurants on. I did a tour there two years ago and learned all about it. So that's one. And then, of course, we want to, I'd like to get an update on where we are with the Food Not Waste Not program. And maybe at our, I know there's a special districts meeting, and I was supposed to get the agenda item to Janet by 5:00 PM today, but I didn't know about this until now. So maybe we can add this item onto our agenda for the special districts meeting that we have. I think it's Friday, as well as adding on a question about the separation and whether they're moving in that direction for the residential. I think it would be good for us to have that conversation with our special districts on on Friday. And with that, I will open this item up for public comment. Looks like we have one speaker who has their hand raised for public comment. If you'd like to speak to this item, please raise your hand in the hand raise feature or press star nine on your telephone and then press star six when you are called on. Okay, and we have Hoi Yan.
Good evening. I'm Hoi Yan. Happy New Year. So last night, I actually hesitated about sending you my comment letter regarding renewable natural gas, clean compost. renewable natural gas, clean compost and recycled paper. But I talked to some residents and now I figure, oh, heck, you know, I'm just gonna send this, see how it goes. So thank you so much for reading my comment letter. Um, so this is, I personally think it's a good idea to have a countywide approach and also support Waste Not OC. So you make so many good comments. Thank you. Now, I was wondering, um, what percentage of organic waste is diverted now? The reason I want to know is that I was just thinking for community groups, how can we help? So we, sounds like we are under 50%. So, uh, this is actually sort of alarm. I don't know. If, if you think this is a bad idea, I'm not going to insist. I'm getting to know the number. But anyway, I just think that each little community group probably could contribute for us to, to reach these goals. Another thing is, uh, source separation is so important. Another thing is, we need to reduce contamination. So that will help us to reach the goal. Please don't be offended by what I'm going to suggest. I'm not going to get you into trouble. I actually have a good idea. So see, there's a lot of plastic, particular things nowadays take our stuff. So people throw plastic into everything and there's a microplastic everywhere. So contamination is very likely and it is increasingly likely. So I hope to have a conversation with you that we could figure out a win-win situation. We're not going to make our business to lose money. But we're, I hope we can reduce plastic to something which will help contamination. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And yes, we did get your, um, your letter. Thank you for that thoughtful letter. And I did forward it on to our team. So we appreciate all of your engagement. Okay, I have no other hands raised. If you, last call, if you'd like to speak to this item, please raise your hand in the hand raise feature or press star nine on your telephone. Okay, seeing no one, we will close public comment. And, um, thank you, Mr. Ballot. You are incredibly well-informed. I think our city is, uh, well-served with you, uh, at the helm regarding this issue. Certainly, uh, I, I don't know if there's any question that we could ask you that you wouldn't know the answer to. That's my impression. So, uh, really appreciate your thoughtful presentation and your knowledge. So we will, with that, uh, close our, our study session off and, uh, we'll see you all on January 19th. Thank you so much. Good night.
Good night.